Oops, sorry darling. Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, March 8th, 2023, meeting for the Franklin Board of Education. Meeting has been properly noticed. Can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mrs. Witkowski?
Here.
Mrs. Sapersky?
Here.
Dr. Kahn?
Yep.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
I am here and Mrs. Larson is excused.
Thank you. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Witkowski, seconded by Dr. Kahn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Before we get to Ben Franklin, I'd just like to welcome our new Director of Buildings and Grounds, Andy Daniels, who's back in the audience. Thank you for coming, Andy, and welcome. Ben Franklin School Presentation, Ms. Jewell, please.
Good evening. I would like to thank the Board for inviting us to come and give you all an update on the fantastic things that are happening at Ben Franklin Elementary. And I want to thank the families and the students in attendance tonight as well, especially given we had to pivot. We were supposed to present to you all in February when weather did not permit, so want to thank families and students for making the arrangements to come tonight instead. So with that, this evening, we are going to just share a little bit about our work with our 4K Writers Workshop and our instructional coaching at Ben Franklin. So I want specifically to highlight that we are being innovative and collaborative around this idea of enhancing student achievement and thinking around like, what does instruction look like in order to do that? So this is something that we're trying at Ben Franklin. It's not something that you would necessarily see across 4K classrooms in the district, just so you're aware of that. This is something that we decided, basically Mara and Kelly, who I'll introduce in just a minute, but decided was a need based on the goals of our 4K program. So it is a selected area of focus for both Mara and Kelly, and it is in alignment with our belief that we need to be responsive to student need in our building. So with that, to kind of just give you an idea of how we got here, or what led us specifically to try this idea of a writers workshop in 4K, hopefully you've seen this before, but this is our 4K program statement. And you'll notice the highlighted sections there that emphasize that we will provide the foundation of college career and life-ready skills to our students in 4K, and that that will be in an age-appropriate academic and social-emotional setting. So we're going to provide those experiences for them to make sure that they're ready for 5K. And specifically, in our 4K program statement, we talk about the balance of literacy, math, and play. And so when you think about those three things together, it really is like, how do we strike a balance between some of that starting academic work while also honoring age-appropriate play for these fantastic kids behind me? So then, in thinking about how it fits overall with our district values and our coherence plan work, it is tightly tied. And both Mara and Kelly are actually a part of our school improvement team at Ben Franklin as well, so they kind of get the through line between all of this work. But one of the district values of being innovative is this idea that we can think differently to tackle complex challenges. And it really is a complex challenge if you think about trying to balance age-appropriate play and development for a student with also preparing them for our 5K program, which isn't as play-based and starts to really get into some of the heavier academic work. So we're thinking about like, how can we collaborate and really be innovative to make that transition happen for kids in our building? And so we're going to take the work that we're trying and some of that innovation that we're doing this year, and we'll see how that translates to student success in future years. And then specifically thinking about that alignment to the coherence plan, and this ties nicely with our school improvement work as well. But in our building, we're focused on developing high-performing classrooms, which involves making that Tier One instruction that all students receive accessible to all students. And so one of the pieces of this tactic that really is highlighted in the work that Mara and Kelly are going to share tonight is this idea that we effectively plan with result in learning environments that accounts for variability, reduces barriers, and develops expert learners. So we're starting pretty young here, but we're trying to get them into that process of really becoming learners and thinking about their learning. And then we're also continually working on building our capacity around high-performing teams. And what you're going to see tonight is that Kelly and Mara are a prime example of a high-performing team. So Mara being our only 4K teacher at Ben Franklin, that can be an island, right? But that is not in Mara's nature to work as an island, so she and Kelly have found a really good collaborative relationship and have chosen to do some of this innovative work in order to ensure that they're meeting the needs of our 4K students. So with that, as I mentioned, they're on our school improvement team. So at Ben Franklin, our driving question this year as a school improvement team is how can we work differently to better deliver that universal instruction or Tier One that all students receive so that everyone has access to their curriculum? And they are just one example at Ben Franklin of us attempting that work and really digging into what that means and what that looks like. So with that, I will turn it over to Mara, 4K teacher, and Kelly, our instructional coach.
Hello, thanks for having me. I'm going to turn that. So what I kind of started thinking about last year is how can I develop the students not only in the play-based area of 4K, but developing their learning and their success to get them into kindergarten? One area that I thought was play-based and also leads a lot into what they do into kindergarten in this is that area of writing. That's the area that they can talk about things they like, they can talk about things that happen in our classroom, and it can be an area that we can use the conversation, and then they can start working on their own independent work. So as I don't have the standards or things that we use, the WEMO standards, so we have developed learning intentions in 4K. So I took some of those learning intentions, which is my standards work, and pulled them out to focus on the main ones that I'd like to use each trimester, and that's how Kelly and I develop our lessons for our writers workshop that we do once a week. So as you can see, the ones that we focused on were the saying the printing letters in our name, very appropriate, need that in kindergarten as well, drawing pictures of things I like, that can come from a play-based scenario, it can come from something that we did in our classroom, and then shapes brings in that math component, we're using shapes during play, it's just all kind of all-encompassing, and then of course, having conversations with our friends, that's happening during play, it's happening during our reading, it's happening during writing. Those are all things that we can bring in all parts of 4K, but we're going to focus them on writers workshop. So with that, we'll show you just a little bit of what it really looks like in action.
Hold on. I'm a genius. Mrs.? So just to give you a little context here, Mara and I have finished the short mini lesson, and students are working independently where Mara and I are coaching with each other and as well as giving student feedback. So you'll see us place at different tables, we'll come together, we talk about what things we're noticing, things that we might want to adjust for our lesson next time, and then we interact with the students. So not only are we working on those intentions for students, but also for each other to keep our work grounded.
And you can see that that's a video that was taken in February. It didn't necessarily look like that a couple months before. It took a little bit to have everyone sitting at their spot and working for an extended period of time and not just saying, "Oh, I'm done." So there's a lot of work, and like, students grew a lot just in their own independence. So now's the fun part. We are going to have some of our writers come up and show some of the things they've done.
Parents, if you want to come around the back so you can see them, you can. Parents who are trying to film. You can go all the way behind so you can see them.
So I'm going to introduce them, and we practiced saying something that we were proud of about our writing. You can also see it displayed up there. We also talked about, Mrs. Magna can talk for you if you'd like.
Okay.
So this is Eva, and Eva, do you want to show them your picture? You can just hold it. And Eva decided to use two pieces of paper to tell her story. Can you flip the other page?
Oh, I like that.
Do you want to tell about your story? Eva told me that she drew the hospital because the unicorn got hurt.
I can tell it's a unicorn because of the unicorn.
And Eva, what was something that you were really proud of about this?
The unicorn.
Yes.
The unicorn.
Good job.
Nice job. All right.
We have Rowan next. Yes. All right. So Rowan drew a picture. Rowan, you want to tell them what you drew?
Nobody was at the playground.
And I said, "Oh, my goodness, that's so amazing." I thought that was a person, and Rowan, you told me it was...
The octopus slide.
Oh, and what are you so proud of?
About the octopus slide.
Good job, Rowan. Good job.
All right, thank you. All right, and next we have Henry. Henry, can you show everybody what you made?
This is the monster jam.
That was a big topic of conversation in our room, going to monster jam. And Henry, what are you so proud of when you made a monster jam?
My monster, my, his, his triangle.
Ooh, because we're using shapes. And what did you decide to put next to the monster truck? For what?
Monster truck.
Yeah, nice. Good job. Riley next. Riley, can you tell everybody what you drew? Can I tell them? Okay. Remember that you drew that you were proud of your stars? And what did you put by your stars? What letter? Did you put the letter S? And why did you put that S? Because you heard that sound? Good job.
Should we tell them that's your pizza? And what shape was it? Why was it a heart? What night did you eat that pizza? On Christmas or Valentine's Day?
On Thanksgiving.
Very good. And as you're looking at the papers, you're going to notice those things like the progression of those letters, the progression of the shapes. Also, you'll notice different paper choices based on the student want, and also letter-writing name boxes if they want that, so that's all that student choice there. Very good.
All right, and our last round is Stella. Do you want to talk about it? Stella, fold it up so they can see it, drew her family, and she drew some letters up there. Any, do you want to tell us about the letters, or should I tell you a little about it? What did you make? That was your?
Family.
And that was your speech bubble, because who was talking?
Dad.
Dad is talking in the picture. So taking some of those things that we're seeing in our books that we read in her own writing.
Nice job.
Very good job, you guys.
Wow.
Good job.
It's very brave to come up here.
Thank you.
All right, so we've come to the slide about instructional coaching, and I feel like this is a part where you already heard some of those pieces, how we started out this year. And so you can kind of see some of my goals that I have up there as I started this year, being a part of the school improvement team, leaning into some student-centered coaching, providing professional development, and then that PLC, which is our professional learning community that Mara and I started and continued this year, and then supporting Mara in her SLO and PPG. And so with that, Mara was able to do some observations so we could lean into her SLO, which is the student goal of, right, thinking about how can we move our writers in 4K that's appropriate? So her SLO goal was based around that, and then your PPG goal, we kind of leaned into, and I'll let you speak to that.
Yeah, I would just like to share how valuable coaching is to have as a resource at school. Steph spoke on kind of how my journey started, was I am an island at Ben Franklin, not in the district, but at Ben Franklin. And it was wonderful to kind of start my journey last year, knowing I wanted to grow and work with someone, so I was able to have Kelly kind of start with me last year, and then we knew we'd be doing this together going into this school year. It was just great that she was able to take on this with me for a year-ish. And then, so we really could make a whole plan for what the year would look like. It started out kind of, I don't have like, a curriculum to go off of, so however we want this to look, how do we want to make a six, what's our end goal? What do we want them to be ready for to do in kindergarten? And we were able to back that up, up to what does that look like in September? That also allowed me to tie that to my PPG, where I was able to go and see what does literacy look like in other 4K rooms in our district that I have never seen before. And Kelly was kind enough and able to take over my classroom for a portion of my day so I could go do some of those observations and pull some things back into my own teaching as well. When we're teaching together, we're doing, it's really a side-by-side, she's coaching right into me, we're a team in there. The kids also see it as a team, which is great to have another person that they see to listen to and to take information from. Another great part, I just want to say, was to, at the end of every session, we take our lunchtime together to like, reflect and say what worked well and what are we going to change for the next week. So having her has been just very, very valuable.
And those are kind of the slides that you see up there, a little screenshot of that data piece that we take in those professional learning communities, where we're using that, right, protocols that we can work on together to look at that data that we're seeing, whether it's observational data that we're noticing the students doing, or things like we collect the right work, student work, see some gains and next steps. We're also always looking at just, what can we do the next time to make sure that we're really meeting those learning intentions? Anything else?
I would just say that, like, overall, like, it has been fantastic to see the work that Kelly and Mara are doing in my building. Like, they're definitely showing leadership among all of our teachers, and they've been very willing to put themselves out there and share this work, which can be difficult, right, to share with your colleagues, right? You're talking to a fifth-grade teacher about what you're doing in 4K, like, those are drastically different experiences in terms of like, what students know and are able to do and what's developmentally appropriate. But Kelly and Mara have really taken that in stride and thought about like, what does all of our work look like at lots of different levels, whether it's the classroom level with students, whether it's collaboratively in the building, so...
It's the conversation in the work. It's not necessarily what the actual lessons are.
Right, right. So they've really just kind of shown my staff too, like, what those conversations look and sound like, which has been fantastic, and we're really excited to see where it translates with our 4K students and this idea of writers workshop. So thank you again, families, for coming tonight, and thank you for our lessons.
You guys want to do a quick picture stuff?
If we could have the students come over by the screen, we can do a picture.
Friends, you can go stand in front of that big piece of fabric over there. There you go.
First, we'll do a picture.
Are you going to have enough height to go over so short? I was just going to say, maybe on the other side of the desk. Oh, my goodness, I can't do that. There we go. All right, here's your camera, smile at the camera. Good job, friends. Wow, look at all those writers. Good job.
Good job. Thank you.
Let's see, can we recognize our names? All right. Rowan, who's right over here, right? He's pretty fancy, right? Henry?
That's my speed, right there. Nailed it.
We have one more thing to give you. Our learning intention and our SLO, and a little artwork for you guys.
Beautiful, thank you.
Thank you.
Don't take it personally.
All right, community comment, I will read as they're leaving. Participants under this agenda item must be residents of Franklin Public School District or parents/guardians of Franklin Public School District. Students must state for the record their full name and address and must limit their statements to three minutes with a maximum of 15 minutes for any and all comment. If the community comment is related to an agenda item, the Board may respond to that comment either at the end of the community comment session or during the discussion of that agenda item. The Board may not discuss a comment or question that does not relate to an agenda item per Board Policy Administrative Rules 8300. Kristin Hooper, please.
I hope I pronounced your name close to correctly.
Yep, nope, that was right. Most people get it wrong, so. Hello, my name is Kristin Hooper. This is my daughter Heather Hooper. We live at 8333 South 100th Street. The main reason I was coming tonight is because I had wanted to see if there was any kind of, at least a start of a plan of action to our community meetings that we had on February 27th and 28th, an hour before the school board meeting. We did get a letter saying that there are meetings coming up, so, which is a good start. But I just want to kind of give you a reminder that meetings are good, but some of those concerns are more immediate than more meetings. Just a reminder that our kids are not pie charts and bar graphs. They need their supports now, not a couple months from now. One of the main concerns we had was the many, many educational assistants leaving. We are losing another one. One that is there that cares for our kids, loves our kids. They're kind of the backbone of the special education department, they really are. They're the ones that are with our kids for their good days, their bad days. They're the ones that are making sure that they're successful, and it's just really important to remember the fact that they are needed and they are valuable assets to the school community. My daughter would not be where she is if it wasn't for some of these educational assistants. And like I said, there are many that have left, and I'm just asking you to consider the fact that, like I said, some of these issues are immediate and need to be taken care of before we miss, lose any more of these people. That's basically what I wanted to say. Like I said, I'm glad we're getting more meetings to address some of our other issues, but keep in mind, the longer these things are drawn out, it affects their daily lives. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Come on. Thank you. Say thank you.
Thank you.
Jackie Mars, please.
I live at 8513 South 47th Street in Franklin, and you all heard from me today via email, and I am here tonight in person to implore you to really look at the situation of our EAs as emergent. As I said, we are hemorrhaging EAs, and it's not recent, it's not back from COVID. It is because of lack of benefits, lack of money that's equitable compared to neighboring districts, although we have been told by some staff, administration, that, oh, those are rumors. Well, they are not rumors. I have a list, which is just a portion of EAs that have left within the past half of a year. Caitlin, Andrea, Abby M., Matt P., Scott E., Diane F., Diana M., Miranda C., Ann D., Kyle. And as I said, these are just a small portion. We can't afford that loss. And as you read in my email, I just had a very recent experience of a substitute EA and my 16-year-old daughter. Completely inexcusable nor acceptable, and it's an emergency to get something done yesterday. I can't say it any other way. I hope you do your homework, I hope you look up who's all left the district. If there were no exit interviews, shame on HR for that. If there were, great, take those responses, maybe reach out to them and get exit interviews. Maybe try to get that last person, hasn't walked out the door yet, to stay. Figure something out because we can't have any more. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and that is all that signed up for community comment. Does anybody else want to comment? All right, looking for, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Sapersky, seconded by Mrs. Witkowski. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. School board calendar, regular Board of Education meeting, Wednesday, March 22nd, 2023, at the ECC at 6:00, and also Wednesday, April 12th, also at 6:00 at the ECC. District Administrator update, Mrs. Bennon, please.
All right, good evening, thank you. I know most of Ben Franklin left, but I'm thanking them for being here tonight and the wonderful presentation through our 4K program, and also the reschedule because they were set for a couple weeks ago, and it was great that they could, most of them could make it tonight. We already welcomed Andy Daniels, but he's our new Director of Building and Grounds. We're excited that he's here with us tonight and has been with the team for a couple weeks now, acclimating well, been through all our buildings, met all of our administrators, and already diving deep into the work, so we're excited for him joining our team. Thanks for being here tonight, too, Andy. Community conversations, as were mentioned, and comment took place last Monday and Tuesday. We've sent a follow-up communication to the 18 families that were really happy came and were very candid and honest with us about their experience. If we don't know things, we can't work at them, and what we'd most want them to hear is that we know time is of the essence. We think often about the student experience, not just meetings, and that we're really working to get some actionable plans in the short term and bigger plans, so we are retaining EAs and keeping a more regular staff. I can understand why that's important from multiple perspectives. So I thank them for their patience, but also understand that we're not asking for a lot of patience, we're really trying to move that work forward. We are offering, especially for those families that came that day, there was a lot of personal family experiences shared and one-on-one meetings with Director of Student Services, Ms. Christine Cody, to really like, work at those things on an individual basis. What did that look like for your family? How do we rectify that now? How do we clarify things? Whatever that may be, but on a personal level. On a larger level, we heard very loud and clear that we used to have a district parent liaison, that was new news to me, but what I'm excited about is that there's a training at CISA 1 in April, and that we're taking parent applications, reviewing them, going through an interview process, and our goal is to have an elementary-based and a secondary-based liaison, parent liaison that is in that role by spring, well, named to be in that role by spring break, able to complete that training in April and May with CISA, and then be able to work with us through the summer to be fully on in that role next school year. So that's something in the more immediate future. We're looking forward to community conversations with our early childhood through fifth-grade families of students with special needs, so that information is forthcoming and working on those dates to also learn more about what goals we can have. The team is meeting to dive more specifically into the themes that we heard last week on March 17th, to roll that information out to our families and our staff on the week of April 3rd, to be more specific. And what are we going to do with our remaining... And what are we going to do with our remaining months of this school year and then also have some very specific goals for next year? What I could say is that we've heard our families. I wish I didn't have to come to that to hear some of those experiences, but know that you can reach out to us at any time. We're going to continue to improve that. That's our goal. We want to be, be better and we want to be where you're excited to send your students and you're excited to tell other families about. And we can hear that there's work to do there and that's what we're committed to. Another point, in celebrations in the district, we've had a lot of winter athletics, co-curriculars, extracurriculars wrapping up, so we've celebrated some regional championships. Moving into sectional work, we have state competitions we've been winning between our Poms, our gymnastics, our basketball teams, our wrestlers. I'm sure I'm missing some, but it's been a very busy last few weeks. Just this past weekend, you could hear the UW marching band. You could walk down the hall and see our robotics team at the high school practicing in the Commons. They actually head to Chicago, I believe, tonight for a competition. And then you could walk in the gym, see the boys' regional final game. And if you are so inclined, drive down to Kenosha and see the girls in their sectional final game. So a lot of excitement in Franklin, a lot of that community that we really love and appreciate has been really exciting to see. This weekend, we have a lot of events also coming up. Just looking at, we have a craft fair. We have a lot of the carnivals at our elementary schools. So if you have an elementary student, pay attention to those building newsletters that came out on Monday to find out the times. I know Robin Woods rolling out their new mascot, so we're pretty excited about that, that it fits into our cat theme. They were Roar and now they are excited to be one of the cats, to be found out on Saturday. So a lot of excitement moving forward that way. Yesterday, we celebrated, I don't know if we'd call it celebrating, we'd have to ask our eleventh graders, but they did complete the state-manded ACT test, so maybe today they're celebrating. But that is a, it's a big event, right? The rest of our high school works asynchronous that day so that we can create the right atmosphere for that testing and all the regulations that ACT sets up for us to have for them. So we're excited that that day went off without a hitch. Great. Call out to our IT team because they do a lot of work on the backend that does not get recognized to ensure that we don't have any glitches logging in, devices logging out. We filter our Wi-Fi differently or shut down aspects to ensure that they're not interrupted. So there's a lot that goes into that and our parents just preparing our students to be there, be on time, have food, all of those pieces. We had a blood drive this week at the high school put on by our student senate and had sixty students or adults donate. We're excited that that's the second opportunity we've had like that this year. Other items to look forward to this month, the Education Foundation has their soccer game this Sunday, which is just an opportunity for families to get together. They're also doing a consignment sale next Saturday, so about a week and a half away. It's the second one. They had one also in the fall. And Anything Goes is being put on by our high school drama department. That starts next week, Thursday, the sixteenth of March, runs through Sunday. That will be at the Saber Center, so hopefully we have an opportunity to take in that production. And also next Wednesday, we have a trades fair at the high school from five to seven PM with a variety of different companies and businesses and trades in our area for our students. Oftentimes, there's very deep conversations that take place at those opportunities for summer or further employment, so great opportunity for our high school students to participate in. And a final thing I would do a shout-out to, I guess, is that we've been doing a lot of work around our profile of a graduate. Dr. Mo, Mr. Velo, who's here tonight, Vollo, sorry, I don't know where that came from. Sometimes people call me Ms. Bennon, so I get it, like, it happens. I apologize, Mike. But they've been doing a lot of work around the profile of a graduate with Andy Thompson also visiting our schools, getting feedback. They've gone through our key communicators. This is really building what it means to be a graduate of Franklin Public Schools. One last opportunity to give input into that work for our families and community members would be March twenty-first in this building at four-thirty is one last opportunity to hear more about what that profile work is, give your input to what that means to be a graduate as Franklin, as we put together kind of that final definition of a profile of a graduate.
What was the date of that?
That's March twenty-first at four-thirty. Four-thirty to five-thirty. And that's the updates right now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, reports, presentations and other school board business. Summer, fall, two thousand and twenty-three, early college credit and Start College Now request approvals. Mr. Vollo, please.
Good evening, everyone. I've been called worse, Annalee. That's just at home.
I tried to be really good about names, so I really sincerely apologize. Thanks for not being offended.
I think my son had a coach who called him that all year, so. It's baseball, so Velo, velocities, which he doesn't throw hard, so. It's an odd comment. But again, as you know, we come, you know, every semester and talk about applications for the early college credit, which is the two- and four-year private in public colleges and courses students want to take. And that can be any grade in the high school, summer and fall. And then they start college now, which is a technical system equivalent of that. And the applications are due for summer, February first. They're due for fall, March first by statute. And then I bring the proposals to you with the work of already saying, do we have a comparable course there? And then we approve those for the next year. And as I stated, early college credit can be any student in the high school grades. Obviously, we don't really have a lot of freshmen and sophomores who do that. Transportation is something that's not provided, although more and more colleges have online versions of their courses or flexible versions that way. We have had students do that, especially if they're really accelerated in math or other things, they might be doing that already when they're freshmen. Start College Now is restricted to eleventh and twelfth graders by the statute that exists. For both programs combined, and this also includes CNA and any other college credit type program, we have eighteen credits maximum per student as their life as a high school student. So three from MATC plus fifteen from UWM puts them at eighteen credits. And remember, denial criteria is if we have a comparable course. So English one oh one is AP Lang. It's comparable course and we deny those applications. And a reminder in terms of our goals, you know, if we have, you know, most of our students are going on some sort of post-secondary training, whether it's an apprenticeship, a technical college or a university setting, that's most of our students, you know, eighty, eighty-five percent enroll in some sort of schooling after high school right away. And it's another indicator of readiness. So college equivalent classes or college classes or advanced placement classes, those all demonstrate that. And we have what we have, but we don't offer every possible course and we can't offer the breadth of things that students are taking. And you'll see they're taking things beyond advanced placement psych. They're taking things in areas that get very, very specific that no school can possibly always provide. However, we do try to look at those things and trends and say, are there opportunities we can add to our catalog that can, you know, satisfy a need that exists for multiple students at that level? And that would come through, you know, teaching and learning and proposals if we find something like that. And we'd have staff who could do the equivalent of it, which they could be credentialed. So are our students ready for that next level? I mean, we hope yes. We hope that every student has an equivalent dual-credit college-level experience or technical level experience before they graduate, if that's their aspiration. Because it's one more thing that shows them they're ready for that after high school. And we have a lot of things in the school that do that and for some students that choose to do it out of the school. And again, the state of Wisconsin says this program exists, therefore I come to you with these things annually. The graph here just shows, and you'll notice that this is the highest number of applications we've had to date. The number of unique students isn't that much bigger, but the students want to make sure they get something and they really, really, really requested a lot of things to make sure they get something. You'll notice the actual number of courses taken and passed hasn't changed that dramatically over the years, although the number of applications, excuse me, courses applied for has grown. So kids aren't taking more always. You know, they're within, you know, one or two of each other, fifteen classes, seventeen classes. However, this fall and summer, we had more for the fall than we've ever had before. And this is the highest summer number of applications we had as well. And some students, you know, applied for the same courses for fall and summer, hoping that they can get it in one of those two places. And they apply before they know the course catalog from the colleges and everything else. In terms of Start College Now, we didn't have a record number, but, you know, we had a good number of courses again. And you'll look at, again, the gray here would be the number of courses taken. So again, those numbers vary based on year. And again, it's a big chunk out of your day to, you know, drop something out of your schedule, drive over to or go to the library if it's an online class and find someplace to work and you have to be pretty self-motivated. You know, if we're not in session with colleges, you're going to college, you're going to class, right? They don't have the same breaks we do, so, you know, they have to be a college student. And again, most of the students do well. You'll notice the successful completion, and I've shared this data as well, and some of the things provided along with the memo include that pass rate. It's, you know, usually only a kid or two every now and then doesn't pass a class successfully. So they do really well. So with that, I'll take any questions about the early college credit or Start College Now courses that came your way.
Anybody have any questions? Please.
There were eighty-seven kids, right? Am I reading that correct?
You, if, in terms of unique students?
Right.
Great, unique students. If that's there, yes, that's, that's the count unique feature on Excel, so I try, I trust that if that's what I.
I thought it said forty-one.
Is it?
I thought the top said, Linda said forty-one students, eighty-seven applications, three-hundred-and-thirty-nine.
Oh, there we go. Thanks, Mike. So eighty-seven, so one student, if one student applied to UWM and Carroll College, that's two applications, one student.
So forty-one students.
Forty-one unique students filing eighty-seven. Sorry.
The list, the key pager that typically.
Yeah, that's, they might have applied to multiple, one student might have submitted two separate applications for like this school and this school. Okay.
And I don't group it by student, I group it by application. Because they do one for, you know, Carroll, one for UWM, one for MSOE, so one student could even do four. And I think we've had that, a student will do calculus III at multiple places because they want to get it somewhere because they've taken calc AB or calc BC and they want to take another math class. Well, that's the math class and if I can't get it here, I'll get it there or there or there. So you can have upwards of four applications from one student.
Anybody else? All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the summer, fall, two thousand and twenty-three early, early college credit and Start College Now request approvals.
So moved.
Second. Motion is made by Mrs. Sapersky, seconded by Mr. Alexandrovich, all in favor. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Academic and technical excellence scholarship nominees, Mr. Vollo, please.
All right, so I switch presentations super quickly. Thank you, Mr. Alexandrovich.
I don't think this is going to be called super quickly anymore.
It always works, sorry. It's Turkey, right?
Sixty percent of the time, all the time.
Oh, there we go. All right, so as you know, we have students who qualify for the academic and technical excellence scholarships. Those students are, in the academic excellence sense, students who have the highest grade point average. You know, and again, that's within the parameters from the higher ed board in the state. And that program then dictates how many seats we get, how many scholarships we get based on how many students we have. So we have four students who can qualify for that scholarship. If they don't use that in a state of Wisconsin school within our boundaries, then it would go to the fifth student, sixth student, et cetera. Similarly, technical excellence are rewarding students who take our technical and career education classes. Those classes are defined for us and it's, you know, how many classes they take, so they accumulate points for the classes they take. And the tiebreaker for that is grade point average in those classes. So there are a couple of places this year where we had students for the technical excellence scholarship where they had the same number of points from the classes. We went to that tiebreaker, which is GPA. We did not need a tiebreaker for the higher ed academic excellence scholarship. And that appropriate number of four, again, we have all the backups because, you know, if one student doesn't use it, then the next student can. One thing we don't get information back on is, because I think I've been asked, like, does a student use it for four years? Do they use it? We don't really get information back, as far as I know, from the state that says if a student used it for all four years. I mean, hopefully they do. And I'll also add, the scholarships have not changed in value since roughly nineteen-ninety-six. So they've been the same about that long. They used to be a full, full ride. I think in ninety-five or so it changed, so. No, no personal reason I know that, just, just sharing.
Okay, noted.
So I say all that to say that, you know, our cost of school has gone up astronomically and the program has stayed relatively flat. But again, these are great students in both cases and students who want to take advantage of this program. So our technical excellence scholars and our academic excellence scholars, you'll see in the coming days and weeks, we'll try to make sure we also promote this achievement via the channels we have, newsletters, social media, et cetera. So get the senior pictures of the kids and just, you know, continue to promote that. It'll be part, somebody can put in, you know, senior night and all those things because these are really, really great accomplishments that recognize a breadth of students. And students can't get both, they can only get one or the other. So they can't get academic excellence and tech excellence. But again, it's a great opportunity and, you know, I just think it's a great program and I wish that it covered more than it does for the students because they've really earned it because they're great. Any questions about academic or tech excellence?
So we don't necessarily know that these students are the ones that you, that, that get these scholarships. These are just the ones that are eligible for second, third and fourth.
Yep.
We don't know who's actually getting them.
If they go to, are you implying in terms that, will they use it or if they go out of state, are you saying that?
Right, they go, yes. We don't know if these kids are going to school in state, for instance, or what they're doing. But these are the, these are the, just the, the list of students.
Yep, so we have those fourteen students. And again, I believe that in almost every case, when we leave for the year and our seniors graduate. Like, we believe that they're being used and we do everything we can to make sure that's out there. But if the fourth alternate uses it or if that student goes to Michigan, you know, they don't, then it goes to the next one. You know, in terms of graduation, remember the valedictorian and salutatorian are the two that, you know, we recognize and they participate in our ceremony. But again, all these students are worthy and, I mean, it's amazing the things they've done because they're the same students you'll see with a variety of things. They're super involved, they're active, you know, they might be on the robotics trip right now. Hopefully they're in Chicago or if they're not, they'll be there soon. But again, they're, they're student athletes, they're involved in activities, they're part of the mock trial team, I mean, all the things. And that's both sides of this, you know, memo. It's tech excellence and academic excellence. I mean, they're really, really great students.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions? All right, I'm looking, I'm looking for a motion to approve the academic and technical excellence scholarship nominees.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made by Mrs. Wacowski, seconded by Dr. Khan, all in favor. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Financial, thank you, Mr. Vollo.
Thank you.
Financial audit approval, Mr. Chromie, please.
Thank you very much. Our audit firm was here on February eighth. The auditor or one of our lead auditors discussed our audit report, so this is really the final part of finalizing the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two school year. From a financials.
All right, do we have any further discussion on the audit from a month ago? All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-two fiscal audit.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made by Mr. Alexandrovich, seconded by Mrs. Wacowski, all in favor. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Twenty, two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-five audit bid, auditor selection and contract, Mr. Chromie, please.
Yep, so as part of just coming over to Franklin and kind of reviewing where we are with certain things, after we had gone through the auditor, really during the fall, just a question to Michelle regarding how long we've been with Riley Penner Benton and she had said as long as she had been here. So I did some digging, found out we had been with them for seventeen years. So that's a really long time. They have lots of institutional knowledge of how Franklin runs certain things. So there's lots of benefits to that. One of the concerns is always while they've been here so long, are we letting certain things go that just need to change because gap has changed or the way things are accounted for from DPI have changed? So ultimately, in talking with Michelle, we opted to go out to RFP, so Request for Proposal from accounting firms to do public accounting. We asked Linda to join us in the evaluation of those, given her public accounting experience with municipality, very similar to school districts on a lot of fronts. So ultimately, we had five vendors respond back to us, Riley Penner Benton being one of them and several others. Ultimately, through the evaluation process, in really focusing on what would an auditor do going back and taking a look at our prior year's audits, so typically going back and seeing how things were done and checking out to make sure their processes were up to par, they were looking at all of the things that a firm would look at, kind of evaluating that and then taking a look at the staff that would be provided to us from that. They were looking at all of the things that a firm would look at, kind of evaluating that, and then taking a look at the staff that would be provided to us from that vendor as well. And then price as a component of that led us to bring Kerber Rose forward tonight for recommendation for approval of our audits for the twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five fiscal years. So we're bringing that forward as a recommendation to move from Riley Penner Benton to Kerber Rose. In reviewing them, Whitnall is the closest district that has it, or has them, as their auditing firm, has very high recommendations. And so we are happy to recommend them tonight and look for the board's recommendation and approval then.
Does anybody have any questions? Alright, I'm looking for a motion to approve the contract for audit services with Kerber Rose for the period of twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made by Mrs. Wakowski, seconded by Mrs. Sapersky, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries, thank you. Resolution authorizing for the transfer of funds, the establishment of an escrow account with respect to and the defeasance of certain of the general obligation refunding bonds dated April twelfth, two thousand seventeen, Mr. Cromie, please.
So first of all, just note that title for the agenda is required, it is written by an attorney, so it's not just there to be extra line. Essentially, this is just a formality to the defeasance process. The bond that we are paying off is an eight million, or portions of it that we're paying off is an eight million dollar bond, but the call date is until April first, twenty twenty-six. So essentially, we'll be paying those funds per the defeasance that was approved by the board and then added into the tax levy. We'll be paying that now into an escrow account, much like you would with a home if you're like trying to put down that letter of intent, and you put a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars into escrow, right? Very similar, because we cannot pay it till April of twenty twenty-six. We'll pay it into an escrow account, it essentially wipes it off of our books, it is not part of our debt any further. And in twenty twenty-six, that, or, yeah, April first of twenty twenty-six, that escrow agent will pay that officially to the bondholders. But again, once we establish that account and pay that, that escrow agent is then liable to make sure that those payments are done, they are removed for us. We have Jerry Dudzik with L R today, he'll be performing all of that kind of behind the scenes work to make sure that that'll help it happens flawlessly. So if we have any technical, technical questions, he can answer those. But really a formality to set it up, because the call date is later than April first of twenty twenty-three.
Alright, any questions, please, Linda?
So is this the only board action then to complete this bond defeasance, or would there be anything else coming to the board?
No, this, this will actually be it, the closing then is gonna be on the twentieth of this month. So that'll be when the process goes for the payment of the escrow agent that Andy referenced.
So then, is there any penalty for prepaying, cause the call date's so far out, do we get penalized for that? Cause I mean, investors are expecting to, you know, have those bonds held.
No, there's, there's no penalty, the amount's gonna be paid, the district through the levy that was done is actually paying this to the escrow agent. It's actually just transferring that responsibility, as Andy mentioned, it gets off your books. Where the escrow agent will be required to make those payments up to that final April twenty-six payoff date.
So then how much, what's the interest savings, do we have that calculation?
Yeah, it, we're estimating it to be about just under two point four million dollars.
Is that current, current value or future, I mean, is that the?
Those are future value savings, as opposed to present value.
So what'd be the present value?
The present value benefit is about one point one percent. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't look at the percentage. That amount is quite a bit lower, about fifty-six thousand, six point nine.
So, did I hear you say we're saving fifty-six thousand in present value?
That's net present value benefit. The future value, which is dollar on dollar, net, net of all costs is at two point three nine six nine.
Is that enough to warrant this?
We've already passed the defeasance.
I understand that, but I just want the board to be cognizant of what the real savings has amounted to. So, future reference, can't do anything about it, I guess.
Thank you. Alan, did you have a question?
Yes, I've been curious, because we've done defeasance in the past, do we set up a separate escrow account every time we set up a defeasance each year?
So I believe what's happened in prior years is we've overlevied and held that to under levy in a future year and have them net out for the actual payment. We haven't officially defeased, which is actually prepaying the debt.
We just talked about this last year.
Right, well, no, I think in history, that's how it's done, is really smoothed out the levy, but it hasn't really prepaid anything, it's held it for a period of time. In case, for instance, the levy would jump up in aggregate too much, we could under levy our debt payments, cause we were holding some overpayments and, or over levies in previous years. Under the title of defeasance.
But the escrow is only required when we are, when that prepayment date is out in the future. Typically, you defease when the call date is imminent. This is a little unusual, and it's so far away.
We could have picked a bond issue to defease currently, but this is the best, this is applying it to the one that's most advantageous to us. So we have three debt issues, they have all different call dates, some of them are current, some of them, as we just talked about, are in the future. So picking from those three, and, or the ability to pick from those three allows us to prepay the one that is most advantageous to us. This just happens to have a call date of April first, twenty twenty-six.
Can I just follow up, what is the nature of that advantageous then, cause it's only fifty-six thousand?
Point of order, we've already, we've already discussed and voted on this, this is merely the mechanism by which the issue, on which the board has already voted, is going to be accomplished.
Well, there, there is a.
Advantageous would be the one that saves us the most hours.
Okay, thank you, I mean, there is a reason the board's voting on this, not just because, I mean, it means something, there's a legal requirement that we, for us to vote on this.
Yes.
Yes.
So it's not just, doesn't mean anything, it does mean something.
That's not what I said.
You're right, thank you. Alright, I'm looking for, any further questions? Alright, I'm looking for a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, the establishment of an escrow account with respect to and the defeasance of certain of the general obligation refunding bonds dated April twelfth, two thousand seventeen, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
A motion was made by Mr. Alexandrovich, seconded by Mrs. Sapersky, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries, thank you. Health clinic, excuse me, health clinic presentation and discussion, Mr. Cromie, please.
So this is really being brought forth as part of the discussion on January eleventh regarding the potential for a recreation building. And then an add-on to a potential bid, if the board approves that at a later date, of having a health clinic, which would be attached to that, to the west side of this building. So a question arose out of that January eleventh meeting, like, what is a health clinic, what does it do, like, how would we apply it to Franklin? So what I've prepared for you tonight isn't a fancy slideshow or anything, it's really just a discussion about like, what is a health clinic from a school district standpoint? What does it do, and how do we apply it? So, health clinics are everywhere, right? We see them all over the place, so first and foremost, it would be important to note that this is not a public health clinic in the terms of people are just walking off the street, bringing in their insurance card and walking through the door, or any fashion. It is designed for our employees, should the board approve that, and then our employees dependents on the health plan. So ultimately, we can, first of all, just talking about who could attend, we could set it up however we want. As it's being presented tonight, and again, this is purely spec, speculation at this point, is I would advocate for us to allow all employees to use it, to provide a health benefit for those that don't have a health benefit or are not health benefit eligible for us. And then for all dependents on the health plan, because ultimately, we need to start curbing, or figuring out how to start curbing our healthcare costs. So really, the impetus then behind, like, why would we even propose this? So as you saw in the board report, we broke pretty close to even in our first year of self-funded health. So that's like good on face value, is we broke even. The unfortunate part is, at any point in time, we might not break even for a myriad of reasons. I love telling this little story, simply from a healthcare cost standpoint. So those of you who know my little daughter, she's seven, she was born like six and a half, six and a half weeks premature. She had nothing wrong with her, other than she couldn't sustain eating, so she would fall asleep too fast. So for three and a half weeks, we stayed in the NICU at a tune of ninety-one thousand dollars, and all they did was feed her there, like, obviously, they cared for her there, but we could have done all those other things other than feed her. So for ninety-one thousand dollars, so that's like a really low minor case of having a child, but a really high cost that's associated with that. And that can happen at any point in time for any one of us. Heart attacks are very expensive, strokes are very expensive, all of those things, and they're really controllable to some degree from our standpoint, but could happen at any time. So ultimately, what we're looking to do is, how do we help flatten our healthcare trend? In the state of Wisconsin, it's ten to twelve percent. So last year, we spent approximately eight point six million dollars on healthcare. If that trend continues, we're looking at about nine hundred thousand dollars of new healthcare costs this year, at a tune of twelve percent of that being our employees' cost, and eighty-eight percent being our cost. But again, that's a pretty big nut to crack, and then if we cascade that out over a couple of years, we're up into the adding millions of dollars every year, or a million plus dollars every year. So a health clinic is one way to do that. Health clinics work in a couple of fashions, one, it's certainly going to be acute, people are gonna go there because they have a sore throat, they have a rash, they're gonna go there, they're gonna see the clinician. They're gonna get an antibiotic, some sort of ointment to put on the rash, and they're gonna be out the door, maybe never coming back again. Or we're going to get some people to have that become their primary care physician, and they're gonna see them for a myriad of cases. I have high blood pressure, so that I'm gonna take my high, I'm gonna go there, get it checked out, I'm gonna get my high blood pressure medication, I have high cholesterol, I'm gonna do the same thing there. And we're gonna start treating some of those chronic pieces into diabetes, which one-fourth of every dollar in the United States is spent on some sort of diabetes-related instance. From typical medication up into a diabetic coma or worse, right? So if we could help control those particular pieces, so we look at it as functioning in two ways. Can we become some people's primary care physician and ultimately take long-term care of potentially some chronic problems? And can we help some of those acute pieces, and can we help a myriad of things in between, is really the idea. Typical clinic is about three exam rooms, a typical lab draw area, a charting area or office area for the primary care physician, which is usually a nurse practitioner or a physician's assistant. I believe in the state of Wisconsin, nurse practitioners are now able to dispense medication as of several years ago, right? So that was a key component, is we'll have medication on site, so all non-narcotics. Those are really determined by taking a look at our entire pharmacy benefit spend, and what are the top fifty to sixty, potentially seventy medications being dispersed under the non-narcotic, or kind of the, like, really high-priced type of things, right? These are high blood pressure medications, they're antibiotics, they're like strep throat types of things, and high cholesterol types of things. So we'll have those on site. People can come get those dispensed right then and there, they're not going to Walgreens, or C V S, or any other pharmacy, they're gonna go see the clinician. Yep, you have strep throat, here's your antibiotic, you're walking out the door, and you're taking it. Another story I love to tell, in regards to this, when we started the clinic in West Alice, West Milwaukee, it was really a blank room like this, and we went through the whole build-out process. We went and did talks with all of our employee groups at every school, and I love to tell this story, but we had the greatest pediatrician in the world, we still do have the greatest pediatrician in the world. I was never gonna take my kids there, but my wife and I were gonna go. The very mo, the very day it opened up, my son woke up, and his throat was as red as the stripes on the flag, and I was like, oh, the clinic opened today. So I called the clinic directly, and I said, hey, can you get me in? I was there by eight o'clock, we were back on the way home by eight twenty, with his first dose of antibiotic already taken. So I was like, wow, this is great, this, like, works out really well. So ultimately, clinic is pretty standard, like, it's, you're gonna walk into a pretty clinical situation. Ultimately, again, it's designed to be primary care for many people, it's designed to be acute care for some, but it's really designed overall as part of a health strategy that takes healthcare and provides high-quality healthcare at moderate cost. And so one of the things we know about healthcare is, we don't really know a whole lot about cost in general. I go see my primary care, they say I need X, Y, and Z, we have it right down the hallway, you can go down the hallway and get it taken care of, and you do that, but we really don't know anything behind the scenes. Part of our job of developing a high-quality health plan is helping to steer that coverage to high-quality healthcare that is moderately costed. We have a couple of those pieces already in place. So we have A T I physical therapy. Our employees who are on the health plan can call up A T I, say, I work for Franklin Public Schools, and I can go to get physical therapy. All of that will build directly to us. So why is that advantageous to us? Well, the typical physical therapy route is I go see my primary care physician, cause something hurts. They say you need to go see an orthopedic, you go see the orthopedic, who says you might need an M R I, let's get an M R I. You get that done, you go back to the orthopedic, who says, let's try some physical therapy. You go to physical therapy, you go back to the orthopedic, you're either good, or we need to do something else, right? So we're cutting out primary care to an orthopedic visit, to an M R I, to back to an orthopedic visit, and let's just start at physical therapy. And if that doesn't work, you're gonna go see the orthopedic anyways. So if we cut those pieces out, that's the advantageous part to us. We have the contract with M D I, because they have very high-quality imaging for C Ts and X rays and M R Is, much cheaper than what it would be at some of the area providers. So if we can say, well, we can go there, it's gonna cost our employees nothing, we can get, we can make the savings on that particular piece, you're still seeing your doctor or whomever they're directing you for that particular care for. So we're trying to provide some of those high-quality pieces that are no cost to employees, and that's how we're gonna try to steer some usage into our health plan, and try to provide some of that curbing to our overall health plan. This is just a component of it. So I think it's really important to know, like, right now, we're just look, trying to get some investigation to it. Why it was added on to the rec building is because it's a brand-new space that would be unaffiliated with the school, unaffiliated with the front of this building. And so having opened up a couple of clinics in a school setting, that's always been the biggest concern that we've ever heard. It's not a deal breaker by any, any means, but the biggest concern we've always heard is, well, people are gonna know we're going to the doctor, yep. So if we can help minimize that potential stigmatism that an employee, or several employees, or many employees are feeling, it's just one thing that we can help do to help drive usage to that. Part of the sales pitch is gonna be lots of videos, so in West Alice would be my best example of that. Again, we had a room just like this, so over the course of the three or four months it was being built out, I did five videos of it. So it started with a blank room, and like, hey, here's where these things are gonna be, to, we have the studs up now, here's where this is gonna be, to we have drywall up, till it's like just about to open. Those are getting pushed out, they're narrated. I filmed an H R A, I went to one of the clinic vendors that we have, I filmed my H R A so we could push it out to employees, cause we didn't have that. So like, hey, here's five minutes, this is what the H R A does, this is what it takes, doing those types of things. I did these things called a, did you know, so we sent them out once a month. They were related to something you could get at the clinic, that would be very, like, seasonal to what's going on. So in August might be seasonal allergies, you can go get your allergy medication here. May or June might have been a student physical, so you could take your children, go get their physical, so you're ready to play sports in the fall. Flu season, those types of things. We called them stall talks, we did another thing too as well, so typical paper sleeve in the restroom, so if you're sitting on the toilet, you have something to read that's related directly to the health clinic. So it sounds kinda weird, but it works, right? People are there, it's something to do, something to read. So part of our job is then to market it, meet with employee groups and talk about what it is and what it is not. I'm not going there to have surgery, I'm not going there to do any of those types of things, but I can get evaluated or referred to a high-quality healthcare provider that will help direct that. So we don't have any vendors in mind, like, if, if, if we get some head nods tonight, and they decide to say, yep, in a couple of weeks when we go, that we could bid that as an alternate, we'll start working with our new healthcare consultant to say, hey, we'd like to start pursuing this. So we start taking a look at our data and saying, this is how this is all gonna work, and this is what we think, and then let's start talking about potential providers. So a key component that I don't wanna do is run the clinic, I don't wanna be involved in that, I don't wanna have any access to that, that's another employee stigmatism, or stigma that comes along the way, is even though it's all covered by HIPAA, that we'd still have access to it. By choosing a vendor, we don't have it. We put ourselves out, we simply write the check, we help direct it and set up hours and things like that. So kind of direct the day-to-day what it looks like, but we don't have any affiliation with it. At that point, we write the check and make sure that we help make our employees that, we make that a useful path for them.
Is it time for questions?
Let's just start with the questions, yeah.
I sort of asked this in an email, but I wonder if you could talk about it. Just the idea of, so I can see the benefit of this in terms of hopefully preventing catastrophic health situations, and I see the benefit of this in terms of an attractive feature for employees. Can you talk to me about how much traffic you need to drive through this clinic to start to see the savings benefit?
Sure.
Period.
Yep. So typically, a healthcare clinic as it's designed is a little bit different than going to my primary care physician. So I have a rash, I call up my primary care physician, I go see the primary care physician. Typically, their job is to take a look at the rash, diagnose it and get you in and out as fast as possible. There's a little bit of volume that's associated with it. This is really more of a holistic approach. So I'm going to go see the clinician for my rash, and they're going to ask me, is there anything else going on? Oh, yeah, my whatever kind of hurts. Oh, let's talk about that, like how long is it? Like, they really try to take the time to get to know people. So we typically look at a visit somewhere around twenty-five minutes or so. If we can average one visit per hour, at least in the two clinics that I've been running, we're able to break even on cost. So that's only seeing one person, twenty-five minutes out of an entire hour. So really, anything over that one employee per hour, we're seeing a cost-benefit ratio to the positive of our health plan.
An employee or basically anybody, right?
Right. Anybody on our health plan, it would be very important to say, anybody on our health plan. I think one of the things that's often overlooked, just let me finish this particular point, please. I think one of the things that's often overlooked is time away from the building as well. So it's really designed to be in and out in about forty to forty-five minutes from the time I leave wherever I'm working, yet in, in thinking Franklin in a dynamic, if it were right there to any of the reaching schools, about forty-five minutes. I leave, I go there, I come back, I'm in forty-five minutes. I don't have to take a half-a-day's vacation, I don't have to contact Laura in HR to get a sub for that particular day. So convenience is a key component because I'm also not stopping then at the drugstore for many things. I'm not stopping at a drugstore or Walgreens, CVS type of thing on the way. I'm walking out with it and I can take it now or however that particular medication needs to be taken.
My question was, you talked about the hour, you know, you need one person per hour. The savings is really, an office visit, it's going to be five hundred dollars if they go anywhere else because it's fixed, you already know your cost, you're employing the personnel, that's where the savings is.
Correct. Yep. And about one, about one visit per hour kind of equates that cost out. It's not a perfect science, but one per hour is a pretty good estimate.
Well, and the cost-saving there is, you know, at a district level, but then also if I'm the, the patient going, I don't have a fifteen-dollar copay to see my primary care doctor. I'm going and being seen for free, and I'm not then going to go to the, you know, Walgreens to get my thyroid medication, have to pay ten dollars there because I'm getting it for free at the school district health clinic.
And would our cost for providing formulary medications be lower as well?
So typically, our cost for providing formulary medication is cheaper. They buy it, typically, the vendor buys it in bulk, right? And then we purchase.
So we don't have to maintain any sort of a formulary stock? We're not personally investing, that's part of the cost of the vendor, right? We're not, we're not.
It's a pass-through cost. So typically, how it works.
We're not guessing how much amoxicillin we need and then, yeah.
Well, I, I'll hit both points. So we know what the clinician costs, we know what their management fee costs are. Then there's pass-through costs for the gauze and the tongue depressors, right? And your medication is a pass-through cost, so we get that at cost based on use. The part that does come in is they'll take a look at our formulary and say, you know what, you had, you're dispensing amoxicillin fifty times a month. We might want to put ten of those in our clinic, but they have expiration dates on it, right? So if only nine of them are used by the time the expiration date is, yep, we pay, we pay for the tenth. Then what happens is we start evaluating, well, we only use nine in that month or whatever have you, so let's buy eight, and if after two weeks we're down to two or three, let's then order that second set. So we start working with that to try to get that a little bit closer, to have that more of a use in time type of use rather than stocking a whole bunch and hoping we get them done. So, yep, the beginning is a little bit of, let's see what kind of traffic you get. And then you always downside is, downsides it as well at the beginning because we know we're not going to get four hundred people to walk through the door in the first month. Like, we just know that. So we start working with that and figuring out what percentages, and our healthcare consultant helps us figure all this out, right? We're not, Laura and I aren't sitting in a room going, oh, I think we should order six amoxicillins and blah, blah, blah. So all of that has helped figure out to get pretty close. And now there's lots of onsite clinics, lots of businesses in Wisconsin have lots throughout the country, so there's more data too to how do they start? And like, how many medications are you ordering per your population that's attending or has the ability to attend?
I mean, I think, I've been a part of that, and I've had access to employee clinic, and the convenience is definitely there. And also been involved in implementing one, and you're right, you have to sell it to your employees to, and it's gradual, it doesn't happen all quickly overnight. So I think it's, I think there's a lot of savings potential, but, and my question to you would be, we don't have to wait till this new building comes in to implement this. I mean, I looked at the other districts that you included in your information, they already are operating them, and they operate them in their high school, some operate in a clinic nearby, some do it virtually. Even a virtual option has got advantages that we could offer to our employees right now. We don't have to wait for the building to, to move with this option.
I did ask you about using space in like an existing clinic, like an Ascension or an Aurora. And what were your comments about that?
So typically, those don't allow you to provide a clinic, but they'll provide what's called a near-site clinic experience for you. So they will give you typically a reduced rate. So we would push them, if we used Aurora, for instance, they're going to have clinics around. So we would negotiate a typical rate with them that's cheaper than just walking in the door. So that's typically how that is done, and we try to push then people to Aurora. The, the positive to that is Aurora is around a lot, so there's lots of them, right? The negative to it is then everything that's then pushed out from there is pushed to an Aurora doctor. They're not going to work with our health plan, they're going to work with their health plan. And it doesn't matter who you pick, they're going to funnel to their provider, right? And so what's, one of the benefits then to our clinic, so the downside is we don't have a ton of them, we'd have one, and it's not open twenty-four-seven or even seven to eleven every day or whatever the hours are. So that's a downfall that like picking a clinic or a provider would do. But the benefit is they're not going to just funnel to Aurora or Ascension or name any one of them. They're going to take a look at our health plan and say, this is the best provider for this, and this is the best provider for this. So they're going to try to work within your health plan and start steering to the best, what would be the highest care option at the best cost for both the district and, and the employee. So it's really like, if you took it as a graph, like where does that cross meet between care and cost? And try to optimize that as best as possible. Now, like, there are certain things I would go to Freiter for every time, there are certain things I would go to St. Luke's for every time, and it's going to be different depending on what it is. And there are certain things that I might just need a primary care physician for because it's like the provider isn't necessarily going to help me solve a strep throat any better at any other place. It's, can you just give me the antibiotic and let me walk out the door and I'll be fine pretty much regardless of where I go? So it's really trying to, like, it's a cluster, right? So we're trying to figure out where is that best point for lots of different things.
Do you feel we need a physical space to Linda's question?
Do I feel we need a physical space? I, if we're going to do an onsite clinic, yes, we need a space somewhere. I think, I can't remember who emailed, the, the only building I think it could potentially fit in is the high school. Ben Franklin would be the only other option, we've done no vetting of that, but every other facility that we have wouldn't have the space that it's needed. My concern with the high school is that space needed for anything else, right? We only have one high school, we have limited space within it already. So if we carve out what would essentially be the rec offices if this building were to go through, would that space be needed for anything else in an already tightly-packed high school?
I think if it's going to save us money, why not? And we have, we have already found space for clinics in our high school. Our counseling services are provided in schools, correct? Our mental health clinics are already at the high school. So why, this would be a natural add to that. And we could benefit immediately.
It's a slightly more complex space.
We're keeping it simple as far as these clinics because it's, it's, you know, it's a minute clinic like you'd see in Walgreens.
Well, I think at this point, we're not debating when and where. I think we're, we're just discussing the benefits of, or potential benefits of a health clinic on site. Max, who, please?
Definitely health clinic, having onsite health clinic, employee clinic, health clinic is advantageous from multiple perspectives. Is that first of all, the appeasement of the employees, you know? Hey, this is a free benefit to me, I don't have to pay copays all the time, I get free medications. I think that would be a big, huge marketing, you know, positive thing for district to us, especially when our EAs are leaving, when our teachers are leaving. I think, you know, a lot of people, I mean, health industry, myself, a lot of people go to VA. The reason go to the VA is that of the benefit. Salary is maybe sixty percent of the private, this one, but the benefit is so great that, you know, people stick to that. So I think that employee health clinic and, you know, it's a great initiative, and I think we must definitely as a board and as a district, we must invest in that because it really can, especially with the private health plan, plus the appeasement of the employee, that traction is huge. That being said, I think, you know, first my question is that, what about the liability? Because, you know, everything comes with a liability, you know? Medical liability, for example, you mentioned that you're recommending we have this contract with the ATI and employees can go to, you know, ATI physical therapy by bypassing a primary care physician and orthopedic surgeon and all that stuff. That's, yes, that's definitely, there's room for that. But there's also a room that physical therapist is a physical therapist and not, doesn't have the knowledge of X, Y, and Z. Of, God forbid, you have a sprain, actually, it's not a sprain, actually, it's tear, and physical therapy starts training on your sprain, instead of a partial train, it becomes a full tear, who is responsible for that? So my question is that medical liability, it's, you know, it's a great initiative. Does the private vendor take the medical liability or does the district have any medical liability? Because that's really concerning to me because that's, you know.
Yeah, to state it another way, we don't want to be recommending, we don't want to be saying, does your ankle hurt? Go to ATI first.
Yeah.
We, we don't ever want to be in the case of.
Yep. So that's a very easy answer, we transfer that liability through the contract.
A second, I, I think, you know, as Linda alluded or any, even Angie, if, you know, as you're thinking and proposing about the rec department moving out, what if, you know, because the clinics don't require a lot of space, you know, the clinic which we're talking about, you know? Specifically, if the vendor already has a setup, you know, where they will get their labs, you know, sent and all that stuff, the vendor will have a specific protocol of how he's going to operate that. We're just talking about space, space. So if we can somehow, you know, think of utilizing that space in the high school gets vacated by the rec, you know, department, that itself, that space at the high school, you know, because employees have access, you know? The only question is that from a security perspective, you know, well, for example, employee spouse wants to come there, employee children wants to come there, how are we going to handle that? And I think that's, you know, with administration is that, you know, can we have a separate, some kind of a door where it's only that allotted space where it's somehow still kind of detached, you know, from the main school so that the X, Y, and Z, any outsider, not, you know, students, anybody don't have access to that for safety of the students, you know? So if we can do that, then maybe we can, you know, kill two birds with a single stone. We have, you know, a vendor, we will have the space hopefully, and we can achieve that without creating an extra building, although a new building is always attractive, you know? No doubt in that, but, you know, it comes with the cost. So that, any suggestions on that?
Yeah. The vestibule would create that safe space, right? So we have the double set of doors there, so locking the interior doors so that they could enter the vestibule and that, just like the rec office doors right now. That, that's a, if, if we would build in that space, that would be the intended door to the clinic. So the vestibule would be open, but that second set of doors would be entirely locked, so a person could just walk in and start walking all around the school.
My other question, question about sort of physical plan, because I, I agree, the, the, the benefits seem pretty remarkable, especially if, correct me if I'm wrong, this would be available even for non-insurance-eligible staff?
So that's really for us to decide, like, the school board could direct us to it, or they could say no to that. You get, by you, meaning all of us, we get to set whatever parameters we want. The only really one we can't entirely set is the hours of the clinic. So ultimately, we have to find somebody to work it. So like if we said we wanted to be open four AM to noon on one day and three PM to eleven the next day, finding a person that wants to work that schedule is probably going to be pretty hard. But typically, we can find some morning and evening hours throughout the week and get a person to work that particular schedule.
I was just wondering if three exam room spaces really necessary, if it's really going to only be one provider? I mean, could you do with two?
You could potentially do, you, you could certainly do it too. The idea is you'd have one staged and ready to go, so when the second person comes in, they could be escorted to an exam room. Person moves kind of back and forth.
Yeah.
The idea behind the three is what happens if we can get it to grow? So in West Alice, we had had the clinic for about eighteen to nineteen months before I left. We were already seeing upwards of three patients an hour. So having those three rooms allowed us to stay, have a person in one, have the second one staged. So when that person came in, a third person could come in while the first one was being cleaned. So the idea is we were able to scale it. So we were already looking at having two forty-hour clinicians there by the time I left after nineteen months. Now, we had larger scale there, so would that potential happen here? Maybe, maybe not. I know I worked my tail off marketing, like half of my job was marketing this thing because it was kind of my pet project, so to speak, of like something that I was highly invested in. And so like, we built it to potentially scale it, but ideally, we would have that space. But then, why we also built extra space in there? So I'm not even presenting the potential clinic we built in West Alice. So we had built a physical therapy room and we've built, built a mental health room in it as well. So the idea was we would get this up and running, we were going to bring onsite physical therapy and onsite mental health within that space as well. So the potential for an extra room, could that be an extra, like, patient room potentially? Could it turn into maybe we have onsite mental health potentially?
Yes, we'd have to think about the relative value of the ability to, like, literally physically expand if needed, like build out, what we did, like build it in a spot that's not completely landlocked as opposed to attempting to at this point in time predict all of the future needs that we may or may not have and build for those. Do you hear what I'm saying?
Right. We could get an estimate of what does that single room cost, but typically, building the exterior walls is the expensive part. So whether we build two exam rooms or three, we have to build the exterior wall anyways.
Okay.
So typically, building the interior isn't that expensive once the exterior is built.
I think Ann hit her hand up.
Ann, please. I don't want to belabor any points, but you mentioned chronic kind of conditions, you know, you're, you have set up a relationship as a primary care physician and acute. Would there be some like health maintenance as well in terms of like all employees get their cholesterol checked and have a visit with your clinician, you know, like once a year? Even if you're not, you know, maybe you really love your primary care physician, so you're going to still go to that, that person, but you have somebody, or you have at least like a once-a-year requirement to come in and address some of those issues with the onsite clinician in terms of hoping to, like, have people live a healthier lifestyle? You know what I mean? Just by talking about it once a year, maybe you do a weight check and a cholesterol check or some, you know, whatever it is in terms of maybe having the general health of your employee base become healthier, which would then reduce cost? Is there any aspect of that, like, required use of it?
So that is entirely up to us to decide. So school districts that I know have ranged from, that have onsite clinics range from, nope, you never have to go to, depending on how many markers you hit in your health risk assessment. So I typically always hit BMI, I'm never going to make it, sorry, I guess it's never going to happen, right? So I already have that one. My glucose is typically high, so I hit that one. So some districts would require me, I have to go twice because I have two markers. Some require none, some require you to go just to talk about your HRA. So there's that one. You have to do one, which is talk about your HRA. Ultimately, what they're trying to do when they do that is, if you just do the one, is we're trying to establish a relationship with that clinician, so can we drive some of the use to that clinician? And even if it only becomes acute care, great. I'm probably not the greatest person to ask because I don't really have a primary care that I've really fallen in love with, and so every time we've had a clinic, that just becomes my primary care. So like, I'm probably not the best person to ask for that, but I know of multiple instances of people who have that great primary care relationship who end up going to the who end up going to the clinic for an acute issue, rash, sore throat, whatever, who end up that becoming their primary care physician. And just like any other doctor, you can have your file sent over so that they have it ready, or they can send it to your doctor. So, like, we've had people in the clinics I've been involved in go to their doctor. Doctor says you need to have your labs drawn. They go to the clinic, they have that sent over to the clinic. You get your labs drawn over here, but you go back to your primary care. So even that's a significant cost savings, not necessarily for the employee, but for us, right? Because we're, that's a pass-through cost now to us. So the, who's ever doing the diagnostic portion of that is just charging us for the diagnostic portion versus whatever upcharge comes from the office and all of those particular costs. So there's some benefits for that. Or people who take their high blood pressure medication, again, right? Because I can get it free here, I'll go see the clinician. Clinician will evaluate me, say, yes, I need high blood pressure medication, and I just get my refill here. But I still go to my primary care for all of those other things because that's what I really like. We still see a savings in the health plan from that. And ultimately, can we build that relationship enough? Can we find a great clinician? So when I say can we find a great clinician, like, we don't vet the medical portion of it at all. But we want to meet them and say, is this going to be a person for our culture? And is that fit? Like, I expect when, if we hire out a vendor, when you bring someone to us, I've expected that you've already vetted their medical piece, they've passed all the, whatever they're supposed to pass. I want to meet them to determine what does the fit look like for our employees? And are they going to be the right person for us? And I'm really looking for an entrepreneurial spirit, someone who's going to take this on and own it as their own. That's a really key component. Are they going to have outreach? Like, it's slow to start, right? That first month is going to be slower. Are they going to start taking a look at our health risk assessments and calling some people that might have four, five, or six markers and say, hey, you know, I saw your results, and they're trained to do all that. But would you like to come in and talk about, notice you have some few things? And they're really trained to inch you through the process, right? So if you think of becoming healthy as a ten-step process, I'm not walking in and they're going, oh, my gosh, your BMI is so high. You need to cut all the food you're eating and stop growing. They're going to just try to inch you up that particular scale, a small portion at a time. And can I start with just getting you to think about changing, like, some habits? And then, can we just start with the habit and let's just see how that's going? And then, like, if that goes well, can we get you to do a couple of things? And if two things go well, can we get you to do that third thing? And then probably things are already moving in the right direction. So just, let's just inch people along as how they're really trained to do that.
But in terms of finding the vendor, you, you would have control over, like, finding somebody or finding a vendor who would offer somebody, like, a certain number of hours? Like, would you have a requirement for how many hours? Or would that have to start slow, like, we're going to be open, you know, fifteen hours a week or something until we get more and more patients? Is that built into it, or how does that?
So we can decide that. So when I started in West Dallas, we hired forty hours right a week because we were allowing non-health insurance employees to go, so we knew we were widening out that pool. In Oak Creek, we only allowed health insurance employees to go, so we started at twenty hours a week. And after a couple of years, we were up to forty. So that's really all determined by us. Could we start with ten? We're probably not going to find someone to do ten. Like, it's typically, we either have a twenty-hour or a forty-hour. But all of that comes with discussions from our healthcare consultants and we start talking about it. There's multiple vendors out there who run these, right? And some of them, that's their only thing. Some of them are part of a provider system. A couple of key components that I've always had is I want control over the clinician. So when we were vetting in West Dallas, we had one vendor come in and say, nope, we picked the clinician and we placed them in your clinic. And I was like, nope, that's not going to work for us. So you're out. I want to be able to meet the person, say, yep, I think that person will work, or no, I don't think that person will work. We're going to need to meet someone else. And so that's like, for me, that's a key component, and it truthfully is a deal breaker. I want to be able to meet them and determine are they going to meet our culture. Price is obviously in there, like, where they want to start with. Number of clinicians or hours is always a component too. Like, again, in West Dallas, we had another one come with us and said, you need to start with two clinicians right away and be open eighty hours a week. And I was like, nope, we're not doing that either because we have no idea how this thing is going to start. And that was eight or nine years ago already, so that was like pretty new into the kind of health clinic. We were only the third or fourth one in the state from that particular vendor, so it was still relatively new. It's because you saw the list of school districts on here in relative proximity. It's become a much bigger thing, and I didn't add any of the private vendors either. There's significant private vendors who have them as well. So a lot of that is much more vetted than it was at that particular time. Other things you look at when you vet a potential vendor is what does the, like, turnover look like in your facility? And then how does the lineage work? If our clinician leaves, do you have someone that can come in tomorrow and start working there? Or what if they take vacation? Or what if your client manager leaves? Like, how does that work on its way down? And so I know we passed on a vendor in West Dallas because they didn't have a, they were kind of newer too, and they didn't have that great lineage. And for me, that was like, oh, it's just not something I want to take on because I want this to go out strong and I want to keep it strong. So we had to find a vendor that had, again, some of those practices and processes in place to backfill should someone leave in any particular position along the way. So, but a lot, again, there's more players in the market now, so more of that process has been developed and refined and is better for more vendors, which gives more choice and ultimately gives you the better options or more options to make a better choice.
This has been in the ether for a little while in the district. So do we, have we had any employees ask, or what are, what are employees, if they are, what are they asking questions about possibility? Maybe Laura knows this answer.
Yeah. So, so far away. I wouldn't say that they've necessarily been asking specifically for an onsite health clinic, but I think that they've been asking for ways to get to know how they can use their insurance and how they can better take control over their health. So we've talked a lot about more robust wellness plans that have to do outside of, like, a walking club. Like, not that it's not a great resource, but how can we help our employees better understand how they can actually reach those goals, like, with actual tangible things to move forward? The other thing that they ask a lot about is just the accessibility piece of it. So we kind of mentioned, or Andy mentioned, you know, the time out of the classroom. We get a lot of calls from teachers and our employees that say, I don't feel great. I feel fine enough to stay at school, but I know that I need X, Y, Z to feel better. I'd like to get it started. And then they need to leave for the rest of the day. But as you kind of, you know, as Mrs. Jewel talked with Kelly, our coach, and with Mara, it was, if we have someone like, hey, she was able to cover my class for an hour and kind of be with my students that I'm able to run to the clinic and come back. So I think it's also health advocacy. We've been talking a lot and trying to kind of work with our employees about, you know, understanding when you go to a doctor, like, what type of doctor are you going to? Is it emergency room? Is it urgent care? Like, what are the real purposes of those specific locations? As well as kind of asking those questions to better understand their health. So I go to a doctor and they kind of tell me, these are the things that you need, but I, you're, you're the doctor. So I'm going to believe everything you say and trust that you're telling me the right things and not that comfort level of asking questions. So to kind of build a relationship with someone that they might see in the schools, like, our clinician could go and do, you know, meet and greets at our staff meetings and kind of build that better relationship to make employees feel more comfortable with their own health and kind of advocate for themselves.
I would just like to say that the NICU nurses probably taught your daughter a little bit more than just how to eat. As a NICU nurse, I just want to say, there's a lot of care happening for that ninety-one.
No, I'm sure they did, and I don't mean to minimize it. But like, to, to just talk about that cost for what, like, for what the real need of.
Oh, yeah, million-dollar babies, every single one of them, yeah.
When this vendor, do they have some kind of contracts with, for example, you know, this vendor, if you pick, does he have the potential, okay, for example, this is doing a colonoscopy, for example, okay? This person will give me, because all of us need a colonoscopy at forty-five, you know? So this example.
Job security.
This, this provider will give me a colonoscopy for three thousand, or this pro-colonoscopy. And can we, will that vendor have the capacity of getting us the best rate? For example, with a, you know, mammogram, you know, or a pap smear, you know, I don't know. Pap smear will be done, whether GP here or not, but, you know, will you be qualified to do that? And, but, but procedures like, you know, mammograms, which require x-ray or the colonoscopies, you know, will the vendor have the capacity to give us the best person to select so that we are benefiting from that? Because, you know, as you mentioned, the insurance varies so much that if you go to one provider, I know, for example, colonoscopy will cost you ten thousand, seventeen thousand, the other provider will cost you three thousand. So will we have that leverage to select?
So we'll have a few things to help kind of like pinpoint what those are. So certainly, our, we're with UMR, so certainly our health insurance, our TPA will help us be able to cost some of that out. And our healthcare consultants will be able to help us determine that too. So when we merge those two with the vendor, should we mention or get down that road, we can converge and help starting to pinpoint where those things are. So even within the same healthcare provider system, that colonoscopy could be three thousand to four thousand to five thousand, even within the same provider network, just depending on where you're going for that particular piece. So they'll help us start to narrow those things down. And then what is required, or one of the things that we require with a vendor, will require is that you work with our health plan to help steer people to that. So they could say, go see Dr. Khan. It's really the employee's choice then to go see Dr. Khan, but we could refer you, get it all set up and have your office call them. So we had our clinician in Oak Creek, like, I was having some internal issues and she got it all set up based on our health plan and where to direct to get them to call me to set the appointment up. So that she helped foster that particular relationship to have those particular problems solved, but all within our healthcare. So with that being stated, if the world's greatest shoulder surgeon were on and we need someone to get their shoulder replaced, we might be going to the world's greatest shoulder surgery because that's the best place to go, that it never has a complication in the world. Versus, well, we could save five thousand dollars if we go over here, but they only have a ninety-five percent success rate, right? So we vet that out as well. Like, what is the success rate is a key component for us as well of procedures versus cost. So I wouldn't want to risk somebody just to save a few dollars. So that's, again, where does that cost piece come in for super-high quality versus cost? And we want to hit that curve as best as we can.
Yeah, we don't want to get into that too much, because again.
That, that's where our healthcare consultants come in and they help determine what that all looks like. I, I have no idea, because I don't know what any costs are. I have no idea what rates are.
Nobody does.
But healthcare consultants have much better scope of what that all looks like.
So on that note, if, I'm just throwing this out, if for the high school, if we revise that thing, can we have some kind of an estimate of how much cost will it take to revise that space to make it a health clinic?
It would save about two hundred thousand dollars if we put it there, an estimate from the architect, if we were to put it within that space. It certainly has to be reconfigured, but essentially gut out the rectangle and then rebuild the rectangle inside of that rec office space. My concern is we don't know exactly what that high school looks like or becomes in a couple of years. So we would be, if we build that in there, we're now negating that space for anything else that we would ever do with that building.
And it's right next to the pool.
So, but, but again, that's like, that's something for us to discuss and figure out.
So what do you need from us at this point?
So I only brought this forward because there were some questions like, what does a health clinic do? How does it even work? Or how does it help? So this is really just a discussion about, like, what can a health clinic do, or how does it work? Or how does it help a potential health plan?
Really to have that information, right, before you're making a decision in a couple of weeks on a bigger building?
Just some information.
I think what I can add to, having worked in a district and having a clinic, is like, a lot of the questions I heard is about, like, what's the benefit and things like that. I don't think we're fully questioning that. But I, I look at it and when I've talked to colleagues and things that use the clinic, it's, I think any of us could probably say this. It's like the trust and the relationship you build with your provider and the accessibility. Like, I'm not good at going to the doctor if I'm getting a cough because I got to get there, I got to make an appointment. When that clinic opened, it made a world of a difference. Now I have a relationship there. I can call, they'll be like, oh, it's fall, like, you're going to need this and this and this, like, yours. And I can go there and grab it, and that makes a difference, not only just in the ease, but also, like, I'm taking better care of myself because of that. And that's what I want for our employees, is I have the accessibility not to just get there quickly, but to have a trusted resource. And if I need something else, like, I've gone there, like Andy has said also, like, I have this X, Y, or Z going on. And it's, okay, they're not only looking at, like, who's the best provider for what you need, but they also know you to know that, what matters to you and that provider. They can make a recommendation. You make a choice while you're sitting there. They call and make that. And just last week, I did this with the clinic I was at, and I got the call for a new allergist, right? Hey, exciting. But it came to me, and all I had to do was make a phone call. I didn't even have to go be present because they were well aware in that holistic approach of who I am, what I go through, how that works and what you need. And I think that's ultimately, when I look at it, what I want for our employees to have and hopefully be able to offer it. Hopefully, we can make the decision, decide to offer that beyond people that just take our insurance so that we are looking at EAs and other positions, that there's some access they have to those resources, to quicker access to medicine, if that's what they need. And we preach a lot with mental health, and what I haven't seen necessarily with other districts doing this is also taking on that mental health piece. I don't know what that could look like for us, but if we could do it for our families to offer that, like, what else could we be providing for our employees too? And trying to be a little more cutting edge on that aspect of it. And I think some of that plays into, there's not a lot of extra cost at that third examination room now. If we're able to then think creatively about how we can fill that differently, than to not have it and try to add it later. So those were just a few things I thought of when we were kind of talking through it and how it really fits with, like, our core values and our, our mission here. And like, well, when I think about, like, our gear up and our PD sessions with staff, we've been incorporating more knowledge on mental health, more physical activity pieces, like, you take care of yourself. Like, that's important. If you're not well, you can't take care of others. And we have a job where we are constantly taking care of others. So I think something like this just really adds to that benefit of who we are and what we offer our employees. We're here to take care of you, so you can take care of our kids. Here's one more thing we have. So, yeah, just what I wanted to add to the conversation. And the benefits I've seen from, from having that access and that relationship and that ability to get to other providers when you need. It's not three different hoops to jump through. Therefore, I follow through on health things quicker than I would have five years ago without that.
That consistency of, of care and maintaining your own health, I think, is definitely a benefit I've seen as someone who, you know, is part of one with a different district. You know, because the medicines are so easy to get, or, you know, you have that ease of getting in, you're much more likely to continue taking what you're supposed to take and follow through on that. And that does, you know, lead to healthier people, healthier employees, but also healthier family members. So, you know, you've got a kid who needs something and you're not going to have to miss so much school because you're always running your kid to the doctor because you're actually taking better care of that kid. Or, you know what I mean, that kind of thing.
Absolutely. And it's hard to measure the urgent care visits that you didn't have because you kept up with the day-to-day and things like that.
But, you know, the cost savings, you know, you're not paying, you know, a co-pay or an urgent care visit every, you know, six weeks or whatever. And it's. I was just thinking, it's kind of the model that many people who go into medicine wanting to do sort of general medicine, sort of this romantic notion of having a relatively small panel of patients and a personal relationship with them and the ability to spend twenty-five minutes per patient. And, you know, I know plenty of people who have chosen to sort of lead a more frenetic hospital system to go into this more industrial medicine or school-based medicine. And it's just an interesting thing to think about, so. It's exciting, and it sounds like the really only danger of it is if we don't advertise it well enough to people. But you seem like kind of a hype man about this, so.
It was a very passion project in West Dallas. I was not, it was.
If you couldn't tell.
I was a little bit more.
It was real subtle. It was hard to tell that, but I think.
Real subtle.
It was. I've also offered, like, Chad could do the videos for you because there is part of me that now wants to see Andy Cromer doing the videos and narrating.
He's telling the truth. I was an employee in West Dallas.
Oh, really?
And I hope that I was on the other side, so that is, he is telling the truth.
No, what?
How were the videos, Dr. Hall?
You're excellent. You're really excellent. And not to joke, I used it all, at the time, my kids were, what, ten years younger than they are now, so difference. Did it all the time. We, teachers went on their preps, teachers went. We were able to give our EAs, our assistants, access to, I never, I don't think ever heard a single complaint for what's that, well, not, not that I would, but I never heard a complaint about it or people, that was Dr. Zach, everybody, that's just.
Over time, like, that trust builds. People share the testimonials, and I think that's the key to it then. Well, maybe I will go check that out, where there was more hesitancy, because there is a hesitancy off that to be seen. We want to remove that stigma, but it's there right now, right? So having it in a different spot gains accessibility earlier on too than, I have to go to the high school now. I got to figure out where to park and I got to do those pieces. There's something to take to it.
Yeah.
Yeah. A few things to, I guess, kind of finalize popped into my head, and both, and Annalee, you mentioned one. Here's the medication, right? And again, we don't have everything under the sun, but if we can provide it free, we have a much better chance of people taking it. And we would rather pay a lifetime of high blood pressure medication than one heart attack. So that was one. I think it fits into our coherence plan too, of being a great place to work. And then probably the third thing that I have no idea how to measure, but we know that our best chance of kids succeeding is to have a high-quality educator in front of them or working side-by-side with them. So how do we, when they're not feeling healthy, how do we get them back into the classroom as fast as we possibly can? And that really goes for all of the positions in the district and you kind of mentioned it. Jess, in West Alice and Oak Creek, there was no sick time needed to go to the clinic. That was whether you were salary or hourly. So I'm an hourly employee, but I need to go. It's gonna take me forty-five minute, well, it's forty-five minutes well spent for us to have you go there, get yourself healthy or do whatever it is to make sure that you can keep doing your job. So for us, we always looked at it as forty-five minutes well spent, even though you weren't onsite doing your job, but it was worth our time to have you do that. And so whatever we can do to get our employees back in front of kids or back, making sure the building is inviting for them to come in or food's ready for them for lunch, I think it's advantageous of us to do it. And the final piece I would leave is from a cost standpoint, even if it broke even, like I think about all of the employee benefits that we don't necessarily measure of time, convenience, the ability to have access to it if I don't have access to something, like all of those things weigh into a great place to work.
Well, clearly we're not cutting edge here. We're kind of the last ones to kind of do this. I don't think it's a real, like I said, out there idea. You know, we should get going and do it. One thing I would add, my experience also with our younger employees who never, don't know where doctors are and how to do doctors. I remember people on my, on my team having to say, go to the doctor because they don't know how to, how to do that. So again, you connect, you connect newer people to just medical care also. Another plus, there's all kinds of pluses, you all mentioned them, but that was another thing I thought of.
Yeah, very true.
Good job, I can.
Anything further?
I spin a sign too. No, I'm just kidding.
All right, thank you. And we will move to item G, SWSA funding resolution. Mr. Cromer, this is not yours. So in February, the SWSA met and Linda brought, Linda shared this with all of us, this resolution for in support of public funding that I'm hoping that will, that will all sign and be able to, be able to take in front of legislators. Angie and Linda and I, on March twenty-second are going, I think that's all. I don't know if anybody else is going. I don't think so. So we're, we're starting to sign this. I don't know if anybody wants me to read this.
Want to read it while we sign it?
Unless, well.
I'll, I'll start, I'll, I'll.
Go for it.
Whereas the school board administrators, teachers, staff, parents and community members of the school district of Franklin Public Schools are united in our effort to provide all children with the highest quality educational opportunities possible. And whereas in the absence of additional revenue limit authority, districts across Wisconsin have been forced to use federal COVID-19 funds to cover budget gaps the state failed to address in the current biennium budget. And whereas the federal COVID-19 funds were created to address the additional stressors brought on by the pandemic and were never intended to supplant state and local funding. And whereas inflationary costs have impacted all areas of school funding from utilities to staff compensation. And whereas, oh, everybody signed it already. Do, should I keep reading or should I go to, I'll skip to therefore.
Just a couple more whereas.
Therefore, be it resolved that the school district of Franklin Public Schools joins with other districts of Wisconsin and partnering with the southeastern Wisconsin School, Schools Alliance in calling on the Committee of Joint Finance to support the following investments in public education. A per pupil spending increase of one thousand five hundred ten over the biennium. Sustainable categorical aid funding for mental health. Increased special education reimbursement to meet the needs of all students across our region. So.
I think we're all on board.
So it seems like we're all on board since everybody has signed except me, who signed on another different piece of paper.
So I move that we sign on to the SWSA funding resolution as presented.
I second.
Our motion's been made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Dr. Khan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
I'm so excited to go and speak with our legislators about this.
Yeah, I think it'll be a good day.
We have a meeting that night too. You guys are gonna be making it back in time.
We will do it.
We will meet earlier in the day.
Yep.
I, I already asked for those meetings to be earlier so that we will get back here. They scheduled the meetings, yeah.
We, we don't have it yet.
Oh, we don't have it.
We don't have it yet, sorry.
And other districts around us have all signed on to this, correct?
Yes, other districts have signed on.
There's a good variety, yeah, correct?
But the same language?
Exactly the same language, yep. They've all put it on their letterhead, same way.
All right, item ten, school board liaison reports, board liaison reports, please, Angie.
So my school that I liaise with is Ben Franklin and I just want to say how proud I am of the work that Ms. Jewel is doing there. She's really proven to be a strong leader and I think this was also a good opportunity for us to see something that I talk about in my other liaison position with Mr. Blessington about the changes in instructional coaching this year, that the, the coaches are now based at a school. And I think that what we saw here is testament to how the benefits of that change this year playing out in action. So just wanted to highlight that, that sort of convergence of liaising.
And in, in, in further convergence, I met with Mrs. Bombian at Robinwood, my liaison school, and her, her past has largely been in early childhood care and, but we talked, one of the things we talked about was the coaches being in one school rather than being at different schools.
District level, yep.
The district level and I, it seems to be, it seems to me to be, make sense that it, that's the, that's what we're doing, so.
Mr. Blessington is also, I mean, we talk about a lot of things in our teaching and learning meetings, but we've been talking a lot about the state of literacy in our school district and, you know, how the need to improve our students' experience is gonna be playing out over the next couple of years. So just pay attention, there's gonna be changes presented to you in terms of curricular changes, instructional changes, further teaching of our instructors on how children learn to read and how we can better use what science has taught us about reading to help our kids really become awesome readers in Franklin. So if any of you want to join our, our book group, I've got a book list a mile long for you.
I think that's a good initiative, you know, I, I think we must become a champion of literacy reading and because even nationally, to be honest, you know, coming, not being born and raised here, I tell my kids that, hey, English is your first language. You have to master and ace reading in English. How come even at a national level, at a state level, you know, you know, we are not able to produce that? So I think that's a good initiative and we must invest in that because great learning, great literacy translates into great math, great science, great everything to us.
And that's one thing that Mr. Blessington shares a view of, if you, I hope you don't mind me saying this, but, you know, just the, that it's not just English that should be talking about literacy. It's, it's a, it's the work of all areas and it benefits all areas, so. We're gonna get, we're gonna get our kids up to some amazing levels of literacy in this district.
Well, at the same time, I want us to be aware of there are neurological diversity out there and in that fall, kids, kids do have learning disabilities that do prevent them from, their brains work differently.
Absolutely.
And we need to accommodate them also.
We should be helping all of our students read to the best of, of their ability.
And accommodate if they're not able to do that.
Yeah.
I think I, me and Angie met with Mr. Blessington. We are working on the grading and more to come on that.
I also met with my liaison school, South La Glen, Bridget, and we talked about data stories. They, I don't know, we have access to it. She kind of implied that we could look at them at some level. I'm not sure.
I don't think we.
I know.
Memorial data that comes with the coherence plan when Dr. Mo doesn't do.
Not student level data.
Oh, no, but she seemed to suggest that maybe somewhere we, I said, I don't know about that, but. And then also she talked about employee engagement because they did the survey and there was some question about, you know, participating decisions and what decisions are, either building decisions or, you know, higher level decisions. So there was some discussion around that. So otherwise, she's having a good year. I met, actually prior to our previous meeting that I had to miss to do almost, with Christine Cody for my board liaison position there. And a lot of talk about obviously our community meetings that we've had with our special ed families last week and looking, it was the at-risk report, which we reviewed at the last, last meeting, but also working with our gifted and talented students as well and connecting with those families and parents and getting a little more involved with that. So there's some good work at all different levels there in that department. And I guess I have my Forest Park meeting is next week, so I can't talk about that one yet. But my other liaison role is the Education Foundation, which Annalee mentioned, is we have the consignment sale next week, Saturday. It's full of vendors, so there's gonna be just a ton of great deals. So everybody should come out to the consignment sale. We have our, the wave game on Sunday, which is designed to benefit the PTOs at each elementary school. So we're hoping families will come out to have a fun, fun day. You know, we do it in the fall with the milkman game, fun day at the ballpark. This is fun day at the soccer.
Soccer pitch.
Pitch, okay.
I don't know.
I, I don't know. Anyway, the wave game, it's, you know, super fun on Sunday. And then not to forget the golf outing in June sixteenth, I believe is the actual date, so.
Anyone else? I did go to CISA in February and of note, the gentleman who, from the Hamilton School District, has been serving as the president of the CISA Board of Control for thirty-four years, he told me.
Goodness.
And he announced, he announced that he is retiring.
He's not gonna go for thirty-five?
He is not. He is, he is, next, March will be his last meeting.
Wow.
And he is retiring from the school board, so there will be.
Wow.
There will be a new CISA, there will be a new CISA president of the Board of Control. It will not be me.
Thought there was an announcement.
It will not be me, but I'm, I'm also hoping that those meetings might move to more virtual rather than.
Yeah, sure.
And I think that's a possibility. At any rate, I did go to CISA. Anybody else have any board liaison reports or school and community engagement reports? I know there's a couple of carnivals coming up this weekend at Robinwood, which I hope to attend and Saturday and.
Countrydale Friday.
Countrydale Friday night.
Nothing like an elementary carnival.
Hottest ticket in town.
I do want to say that I did attend the, the last conference basketball games at the high school for the girls and the boys. I just wanted to see what, you know, how full the games were.
What was your impression?
It was nice and cozy and a, a great experience. Excited fans and parents, so it was, it was good. Although I have to say with the boys, I was able to scoot home after the second half and catch the rest of the game on my Facebook Live, so it's amazing. I also did catch the choir concert at, at the, at the high school. Those kids are always fun to watch. And I went to the UW band performance also. I sat next to Allison and Daily, Dairyland, Dairyland?
Allison Dairyland.
She was sitting and her grandmother was sitting next to me.
You were with a celebrity.
Her boyfriend was in the band. She wasn't wearing her costume though.
She wasn't.
She was not wearing her costume.
For sash.
I had an interesting, so I got to know a couple of students who were involved in Student Senate when I organized the fashion show. So they invited me to be their speaker at Student Senate. And they, they just basically submitted a lot of questions about what school board does and they were really good questions. So that was really fun. Lot of focus on how snow days are determined.
I did walk through the middle school on what could have potentially been a snow day. Was that two weeks ago now?
Yeah.
There were many kids that I was like, well, they know who I am. Call the snow day, right? I was like, yep, I was up at three-thirty watching the weather and here we are, we're fine.
No, it was really good that they asked a lot of really good questions.
I also did attend the resource fair at the high school as a, I was there as a vendor.
Oh, you were.
But I was got to observe. There's lots, lots of community resources there, so, and parents were around. I don't know how many parents, but, so that was also good. First time they had that, so. And also I think a couple of you were part of the knowledgeathon at South La Glen, which was kind of fun. Whenever you have kids in front of you, it's always kind of cool.
Yeah.
Especially when they're sharing, sharing their knowledge and can ask the questions.
They know a lot of stuff. I think a number of us attended the community conversations with our parents last week. Those were really valuable sessions and, you know, anytime that we get a chance to sit with constituents and hear directly from families, I think it's really important for us as board members to hear those stories. So that was really, really important work to, to do. I'm glad that we were able to be a part of that. And I, you might be surprised to know this, but I attended the band concert on Saturday. It was really fun to see how many people came who are not like Franklin people and people talking about, you know, how far they traveled. There are some people who traveled pretty far to see their band kids. And I would say my most favorite moment, I mean, aside from seeing my own kid perform, was seeing all the three, we had three Franklin alum who were there and having them connect with Mrs. Umhafer, who was their band teacher, you know, here in Franklin from when they were little and, and, you know, all the way through or whatever, and their excitement to be back. You know, their pride in showing their band members like, yeah, this is my, you know, this is my band room. This is, you know, this and that, whatever. And then, you know, that moment with Mrs. Umhafer, it was really, it was a real Franklin pride moment.
I didn't hear any shout-outs for you though. I mean, usually this.
Uh, my father's birthday was there, so she used her shout-out to give a shout-out to Pop Pop for his birthday.
Oh, that's what it was, okay.
Yeah, so I didn't, I didn't get a shout-out.
It's okay.
It's okay. We did, they were very grateful. We fed the band and they said that we had the best, I heard, we had the best food of all four of the runouts that they went to, so.
That's all the shout-out you need, yeah.
What?
That's all the shout-out you need, to know that we fed them well.
As long as they're happy and well-fed, so.
All right, anybody else? School, any school board member comments?
Hey, I just really appreciated the opportunity to talk about the health clinic. I'm like, oh my God, this was just for our information. So it was nice to have that opportunity to talk about something outside of, and a vote.
I think it's helpful to be able to have those conversations ahead of voting so we can really kind of get all those questions answered and.
We've been trying to do that more this year.
Good job, good job getting that on the agenda.
All right, future agenda items. Robinwood School Presentation is next meeting. Obviously, we, we usually have one in between, but obviously we were snowed out last time. Board Clerks Report, Election Notice and Notice of Ballot Positions. Community Ed and Rec Facility and District Health Clinic Alternate. Franklin High School Presentation will be coming up. And Sabre Center Update. Health Insurance Update. Policy three-six-three-three Sabre Center for Performing Arts Facility Use. Policy sixty-three-fourteen Greeting System and Policy fifty-eight oh-one Student Progress Reporting will be coming up.
I have another request. Can we maybe get some information on our educational assistance in terms of how many we have, how many are filled? You know, just some basic information on where that, what's happened the last two years.
I'm not sure that that will be an agenda item, but maybe.
Or maybe you can just share it even.
Also, I don't know, but I think.
Sure Laura probably has that information from staffing reports over the last two years. Excuse me, we can put together.
Thank you.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. We are adjourned at eight oh-nine. Thank you, everyone.